I call order to the Planning Commission meeting for April twenty second. Darcy, could I please have the roll call?
Commissioner Loops?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Pack?
Here.
Commissioner Midda?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Commissioner Moss is not present at this time, and Commissioner Peterson indicated that he will not be able to join us tonight.
Thank you. Public comment?
So this is an opportunity for a member of the audience who's here for a reason other than our hearing tonight. If they'd like to make comments to the Planning Commission, there's a three-minute time limit for that. But again, this is not related to the code amendments for accessory dwelling units and RVs and other housing-related issues that will be coming up later in the agenda. So if you're here to speak on another matter before the Planning Commission, please use the raised hand feature now. No hands are raised.
Thank you, Jennifer. This is an opportunity for attendees to provide comment on issues of concern that the Planning Commission, unless that is not an item on the agenda for public hearing. Okay. Sorry, excuse me. The public hearing is now open for consideration of ZDO two eight five, a legislative proposal to amend the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Development Ordinance. Assisting us in the hearing today are several members of the county staff. Principal Planner Martha Fritzi, Planning Director Jennifer Hughes, Assistant Director of Development Cheryl Bell, and Administrative Specialist Darcy Renhart. This public hearing is being conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. Panelists for today's hearing, which will include members of the Planning Commission, county staff, have both audio and video capability. If a panelist is participating with audio but not video, members of the audience will not see the panelist's name on their screen, but will be able to hear when they speak. Audience members who have joined the meeting will have their mics muted unless they wish to testify, in which case they will be called upon to do so by the county staff moderator. Audience members' video will not be turned on at any time. Today's hearing is being recorded as required by law. The county will make every effort to post the recording on the county's website as soon as possible. The Planning Commission is charged with making recommendations on the legislative amendment proposal to the Board of County Commissioners. The record of this hearing will be forwarded to the board, which will make the final decision on the matter. The board will conduct another hearing on the application on May eighth at ten P ten AM. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started. A new additional testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond ten PM unless majority of the planning commissioners in attendance vote to continue past that time. If not concluded, it will be continued to a date and time certain. The hearings may be continued for other reasons as well. If an announcement of an additional hearing date and time is being made tonight, it will be the only notice given of that additional hearing. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. Planning and zoning division staff report. Enter into record, into record any of the additional correspondence received. Testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations or hamlets. Testimony by any other person. Closing of the public hearing, Planning Commission discussion in action. The planet staff report. The planning and zoning division staff will now present their staff report.
Thank you. That's me. This is Martha Fritzi. I'm principal planner with the county's planning and zoning division. And I have a presentation to share, and I, while I am trying to figure out how to do this, I'm going to apologize ahead of time. It's pretty lengthy. I will try to get through it as efficiently as possible, but we do have, as you're aware, some pretty hefty items to consider today, and so I wanted to be sure to give them enough. Give them fair consideration and give you enough information. So you can see my screen now, right? It's the title page. All right. Okay, so we are here to discuss ZDO two eighty-five. Minor and time-sensitive amendments and new housing options. It's a package of code amendments that we are going to discuss. Before we get started, there were several new exhibits that got forwarded to the Planning Commission today. Exhibit seven three eleven. Note that I did not include exhibits one through six. Those are all found in attachment B in the packet that you should have received last week. Exhibits seven through eleven include a couple of comments from members of the public in support of rural ADUs. One in support of both the ADU and RV options that we're going to discuss. Include a couple of comments from some CPOs identifying some concerns with this proposal, including some recommended changes. And then I included in the records of correspondence that I had had with the state's Department of Land Conservation and Development. Just a more of a conversation. It's not really testimony, but I thought maybe it was provide some clarification on some of the proposed amendments because they had been asking some questions. So moving right along, this is a legislative. This is a package of legislative amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and zoning zoning and development ordinance. It includes changes to twenty-one different sections of our zoning and development ordinance and one chapter of our comprehensive plan. There are a number of things that this package does. You probably are familiar with this term minor and time-sensitive amendments. That's a package that we try to do annually. That includes things, you know, clarifying existing language, correcting errors, making minor changes, making changes to comply with state state law and mandates. This year, we also took the opportunity to use this package as a vehicle to adopt new allowances under state law and specifically new housing allowances. So a little background in how we got here before we get started on the details. The minor and time-sensitive amendments package is part of the long-range planning work program that's adopted by the board. But like I said, this year, we decided to include a few additional sort of optional items that really are a little bit less minor, maybe a little more time-sensitive. But we thought that they could be packaged nicely with some of these other mandatory housing amendments. And so we went and talked to the Board of County Commissioners last October about these two optional items. And they directed us at that policy session to go forth with this with these proposed amendments to draft them, take them out to public for comment through the public hearings process. We came and talked to the Planning Commission in February of this year, although I believe I put the incorrect date in the staff report. It was February twenty-sixth, not the twentieth. And we talked about these items with you all and hopefully got your questions answered and walked away with a little bit more of an understanding of how much more work we had to do on this. And so we put the package together. We have put it out for notice. We also created a webpage specifically for these optional items to to help inform people of what was going on and also to gather input. We put out a survey. It was open from March eighteenth till April tenth to sort of let people provide some higher level input, you know, information about these options for rural ADUs and RVs. We got a pretty good response from that. It was over six hundred respondents. We had hundreds of comments to wade through. And we're still working on sort of lumping those together in a meaningful way, but I will I will touch on that today. And then we had an online Q and A session or informational session with me in which I gave a presentation about these optional housing items and was available for questions. And there were a lot of good questions at that Q and A session in April of this year. And so here we are with this proposal. As a package, this proposal would really accomplish these five big actions. One is allow accessory dwelling units in rural residential zones. Two, allow RVs for residential use as second dwellings in certain areas. The third main action is amending standards for replacement dwellings in agriculture and forest zones. The fourth is expanding allowances for affordable housing generally in the urban area and allowing prefabricated structures and single-room occupancies. And then the final one is the minor non-substantive changes for clarity, correcting errors. It this year, it includes things like correcting citations, removing reference to a zoning district that no longer exists, clarifying setback exemptions for middle housing land divisions, trying to clarify how we calculate the floor area for things like ADUs and guest houses. And then adding some references and removing any conflicts in our comprehensive plan that relate to these mandatory items for affordable housing and such. So I'm going to talk probably ad nauseam about items one and two because those are optional. I will touch on three and four, but I'm also happy to answer any additional questions on those. So the first item is rural ADUs. The proposed amendments would allow for ADUs in rural residential zones. And before we talk about where, let's talk about what. I think we probably are all pretty familiar with what an ADU is right now. But maybe not everybody, and I think the important thing to keep in mind is an ADU is actually a dwelling unit. It is another dwelling unit on a property, a full dwelling unit with a kitchen. It's usually smaller than your primary dwelling. It can be attached, detached. It can be an internal conversion in the basement, in the attic, on the second floor. It could be built above a garage. There's lots of different forms an ADU can take. But the important thing to keep in mind is that this is a dwelling and it has to go through the same permitting process and be connected to the same types of sewage disposal and, you know, water provision facilities that your regular your regular dwelling has to be connected to. So why are we talking about ADUs? ADUs are already allowed in the county. This isn't something, a new form of housing, but currently they're only allowed inside of urban growth boundaries. And that's because that's where the only place that state law would allow us to allow it. But recent legislation has expanded that allowance. Now the county can consider allowing ADUs outside of urban growth boundaries. This is optional. Like I mentioned, we don't have to, but we can. And if we do, there are certain minimum standards under state law that we have to apply. But we also could be more restrictive. We could apply some additional standards, and I'll talk about those in just a minute. I'm first going to talk about the where. This is only we're only talking about rural residential zones outside the urban growth boundary, outside of urban reserves. Excuse me, these zones listed up here, we are not talking about farmer forest zones, exclusive farm use, ag forest and timber. Those are not included in this. Generally, I know this is hard to see, but I just wanted to give you a general sense for where these zones are. And it's these blue areas are the rural residential zones that were listed on the last slide. Within these areas, there are roughly eighty-three hundred lots that are larger than two acres. This two acre is one of those state minimum standards. But they are dispersed across the rural area. If we I I I had our GIS folks group these in general areas. You know, generally west over here is about a thousand lots. Down Beaver Creek and two thirteen is about eighteen hundred lots. Over here, redland areas about two thousand lots. This area here down the highway to Estacada is another twelve hundred. And then East County and up the mountain is about another two thousand. So I guess I would say they're fairly evenly dispersed east to west. But you can see they're primarily along our major transportation corridors. So if we are going to allow accessory dwelling units within those blue areas, what are the standards that we have to apply? One of them is this minimum lot size of two acres. The ADU cannot have be larger than nine hundred square feet. It cannot be farther than a hundred feet from the primary dwelling. You can only have one other dwelling on the property. So in other words, if you have a dwelling and let's say a hardship dwelling, a temporary care dwelling for someone, you do not also get an ADU, one other dwelling on the property. There's language about it not being a nuisance property. The ADU has to have adequate water and sewage disposal. It cannot be used as a short-term rental. And then there are certain wildfire mitigation standards that would apply, including certain construction standards that would apply. And once the state adopts their wildfire maps, which I believe are in process, they're in process of, well, drafting them right now. There will be also some defensible space standards required in certain areas. Those are the minimums. The amendments do include all of those minimums. The only things that we added in addition to this were that not only could you not have one dwelling, not not only could you, hmm, I'm saying this backwards, you also cannot have a guest house on the property. So we a guest house is not actually a house. It's not an ADU. It's like extra guest quarters. But we added that in. Some other jurisdictions had done this. So in other words, you have one house and one ADU. Can't have a house and a guest house and an ADU. The intent is that there's two two dwellings on the property. And then the other standard that we added were setbacks. So currently, in most of these zones, accessory structures, this is an accessory dwelling unit, have smaller property line setbacks than the primary dwelling, and we thought that it was appropriate to make the accessory dwelling unit here have the same setback. So in other words, they can't be built any closer to a property line than the primary dwelling. Those are the only additional items that we have added in this proposal above and beyond the state standards that are listed here. Well, summarized here. So like I said, there was a survey. There were over six hundred responses. One of the questions was, we're trying to just get a general feel for how people, what people thought about this allowance. And it seems based on these responses that there is pretty strong support for allowing ADUs in the rural area. Over seventy percent, over seventy-one percent of people responded that the county should allow construction of ADUs in all of these areas, all those blue areas that were identified on that map. Twenty-one percent were against it, and about seven and a half percent said, well, only in some of these areas. And like I said, there was a number of comments that were included in this, and some of those areas were identified in the comments. There were over, or there were hundreds of comments. Those related to rural ADUs are sort of grouped into concerns and opportunities. Sort of on the concern side, what was most commonly mentioned was the quality of life in the rural area. A lot of concern about what happens to sewage, you know, making sure that the ADU would be connected to, you know, septic and water supply. A lot of concerns about it becoming a short-term rental. There were concerns about crime and public safety, whether or not the infrastructure, and I believe when people said that, they largely meant the transportation system, you know, was sufficient. And then, of course, we had a lot of comments about code enforcement and how how these rules would be enforced. On the flip side, I think that there is a recognition that this really is a good option to house other family members or, you know, friends who might need a less expensive place to to live. It could be an income option for people in the rural area to build an ADU and rent it out, long-term, not short-term. And so I think that there was a pretty, there is more of a balance in the comments related to ADUs. I'll talk about the RVs in just a minute. We got a slightly different response. So that really is the rural ADU section portion. I'm going to move on to the second item, which is allowing recreational vehicles or RVs as second dwellings. The counties and the state's definition of recreational vehicle is pretty broad. It's highlighted in these bullets here. It has it's a licensed vehicle with or without motive power, designed for human occupancy. It cannot have a gross floor area larger than four hundred square feet in setup mode. And under our definition, we specify that it 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 does include, but not limited to park trailers, travel trailers, pickup campers, motorhomes, fifth-wheel trailers, camping and tent trailers. It's pretty broad when we're talking about RVs. We are talking about all of these vehicles potentially being allowed as second dwellings. Again, this is not something that is allowed now. Generally, living in an RV is prohibited unless it is approved under some sort of temporary basis, a hardship or temporary dwelling for care. We allow someone to live in an RV on a temporary basis while they're building a house, things like that. It's not a permanent residence. Recent legislation also created this opportunity for counties to allow for RVs to be used as a second dwelling in certain areas. This, like with the ADUs, is optional. There are minimum standards under state law that the county has to comply with, but we can also apply additional standards if we choose. So this allowance is a little bit broader in terms of geography. It includes properties both inside and outside the Portland Metropolitan Urban Growth Boundary in residential zones, single-family residential zones, which are all listed here. Again, we're not talking about farm and forest zones. And again, the this use would not be allowed in an urban reserve. And that's because of state law. So this blue area should look familiar. These are the rural residential areas. The orange are inside the Portland Metropolitan Urban Growth Boundary, the single-family zones that we could potentially allow this use. The number of lots that could potentially have this use is much larger than could accommodate the rural ADUs in part because there's no minimum lot size identified in state law, whereas there was a minimum lot size. In part because this also, and I didn't show it effectively, is also allowed in the rural cities, urban growth boundaries. But needless to say, there is a large number of lots in the urban area, over twenty-four thousand that would potentially qualify and about fifteen thousand in the rural area that would potentially qualify for this use. Again, they're dispersed geographically throughout the rural area, certainly east to west. And I don't have those split out into zones, but I would imagine the distribution is similar to the to the way it was in the other for the rural ADUs. So what are these standards that we would have to apply if we are to allow ADUs? Excuse me, RVs as second dwellings in these areas? Well, only one can be cited on the property. There can only be one other dwelling on the property. It needs to be the property owner's, at least one property owner's primary residence. The dwelling can't be rented. No part of the dwelling can be rented. The property owner must provide what's called essential services to to the RV. Essential services, and then it it sends you to the statutes, to a section of the statute that identifies water sewage disposal and electrical supply as as these essential services. And there's some other sort of habitability language in there as well. Again, the RV cannot be used as a short-term rental. And and the law specifies that the RV is not subject to state building codes, which RVs are not. They're vehicles. So in addition to those standards, as we were going through and creating this proposed amendment package to allow for this, we identified a few other items that we thought were important to include in these standards. In this case, it includes a minimum and maximum distance from the primary dwelling. Minimum distance is largely for fire concerns. And then the maximum distance is just the same as what was for the ADUs. We also included a setback, again, the same as the primary dwelling. The RV must be set back the same distance from all the property lines as a primary dwelling, or in other words, it can't be any closer. And we added some language in there to clarify that the connection that the RV does need to be connected to an onsite wastewater system or to the public sewer, depending what's available. Same thing with water and the electricity, and it all needs to be properly permitted. And so in essence, what we were trying to get at with this language is that it's not a hose. It's not an extension cord running to the RV like it essentially needs to be its own little RV hookup podium spot. And I'm probably not using the right terms, but it does need to be connected to all of those services and permitted that way. And then we also added this provision that the property cannot contain a guest house. It just can have that one dwelling. So that's what is concluded in this proposal. There was a much more mixed response to this option in the survey with only about forty-one percent indicating they thought RV should be allowed in all these areas as second dwellings. Although almost twelve percent said they should be allowed only in rural areas as second dwellings. But just over a third of people who responded did not support this this idea at all and said that RVs should not be allowed as second dwellings in any of these areas. Comments were very similar. I think that there were perhaps a little few more concerns identified. Mentioned quite a bit was the fact that RVs are temporary and not for permanent habitation. There was a lot of concern about what happens to the sewage and, you know, and where they are getting their water supply, short-term rentals, negative effects on property values, crime, public safety, and again, code enforcement. Again, there was some acknowledgement, of course, that this could be an option to house family members or the elderly and could provide an affordable housing option for for people. So that's the RV portion, and so those are the two optional items, the rural ADUs and the RVs. These other two items I'm going to talk about just very, I promise, very briefly, are mandatory, and so we are just including them in our in the ZDO, in our zoning code, so we don't have to implement them straight out of the state law, which is what we're doing for this one right here. The legislature recently changed the rules for the alteration, restoration and replacement of dwellings in agriculture and forest zones. And actually, in a way, it was extremely helpful to us to as administrators of these, as administrators of these rules because it lined them up. And previously, there were different rules for for exclusive farm use for farm zones versus forest zones. And now they're all the same. So we actually find that very helpful. It creates the same process and the same standards for replacing an existing dwelling in one of these zones. It still retains this idea that the dwelling has to have sort of the general components that make it a dwelling, an intact roof and walls, other physical components that make it a dwelling. But it allows you to look back three years. And so if if it if it has had, if all of those things have been removed from the dwelling and it's no longer a dwelling and it's been more than three years, then it doesn't get to be replaced under this, under these rules. And there's also some standards for how, when, how and when it was assessed as a dwelling. And like with the ADU standards, there are some wildfire construction standards required for replacement dwellings in all of these zones. All of this again is is already in effect. We are currently implementing it out of state law, so we are just putting this into our code. We are not being any more or less restrictive than state law, and so we're just codifying it so we can administer it better. And then the other housing items are confusing at best, but they are mandatory. And so there were several different bills that required we allow certain types of housing that were not necessarily identified or defined in our code before, but also expanded allowances for affordable housing. These are these generally apply in the urban areas. The affordable housing is only inside the Portland Metro Urban Growth Boundary, only in urban zones that have urban services. It expands allowances for affordable housing properties owned by certain entities, certain public entities or religious organizations. It provides an alternate housing density bonus that we've added to our code. But we're allowing people the choice because it's different than ours, and there wasn't really a good way to line them up. And then single-room occupancies is a new sort of housing type that state law requires us to allow inside of an urban growth boundary, any urban growth boundary. In single-family zones, you have to allow up to six SRR units on a lot. In other residential zones, it's subject to the same density standards. And the single-room occupancy is defined by state law as a residential development with no fewer than four attached units that are independently rented and lockable and provide living and sleeping space for the exclusive use of the occupant, but require that the occupant share sanitary or food preparation. that the occupants share sanitary or food preparation facilities with other units in the occupancy. So it's not, it it's kind of, they're kind of dwelling units, they're kind of not. Um, and so I think that people's codes were having an issue with whether or not these are dwelling units, and so that's why uh we've added this additional housing type. And then prefabricated structures. Um, similarly, they're they're prefabricated uh dwellings. Um, and so state law says that inside of an urban growth boundary, we have to allow these in the same manner as we allow manufactured dwellings. We actually took it a little bit further and are just allowing prefi- proposing to allow prefabricated structures. Um, the same as manufactured dwellings, pretty much any anywhere you could have a manufactured dwelling. Um. And so that is included in the proposal as well. So um all of these proposed, these proposed amendments are included, like I said, in the one comp plan chapter, chapter four, and in the twenty-one ZDO sections, they were included in attachment A. Um, and the staff report that accompanied all of that um looked at the applicable applicable approval criteria for these items, including the relevant statewide planning goals, statutes and administrative rules, Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, the County's Comprehensive Plan and the ZDO. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the findings and analysis in the staff report, but I'm I am not going to go through it except to say that staff found that these proposals meet all of the applicable criteria. Um. I'm gonna pause for just a moment and Jennifer can correct me if I completely misstated this. So staff still has a few small um changes that we want to make to the specific language in the code amendments between your meeting and the board's hearing. Um, for a couple of reasons, most of them are just non-substantive, maybe changing a couple of words here and there, so it's so it's more clear. Um, but there one is one related to the process for the alteration, restoration and replacement of dwellings in the agriculture and forest zones. Um. And currently, the proposed, under the proposal, any of those would need to go through a type-two process. Um, and we're trying to split it out and create a type-one process for some of those and I've probably totally destroyed that, Jennifer.
I wouldn't say you destroyed it. Um, so little bit of history and then a little bit of explanation for um folks in the audience who who maybe don't deal with these type-one and type-two things every day. Um. Type-one means it's a staff-level decision. Um, and it does not include public notice or a right to appeal to the hearings officer. So these tend to be applications that are, you know, relatively straightforward where the standards are clear. And therefore, there really isn't much point in having a complex process because the answer as to whether they can do it or not is clear. The type-two process is for things that are a little more discretionary, where we're not quite sure there's a standard that applies, but maybe, you know, the words are a little squishy and different people may have different opinions about what they mean. So that's a type-two. Replacement dwellings up until now, well, for about the last ten years or so, the standards in the exclusive farm use zone have been more discretionary. They've had more of those squishy words. Um, particularly related to how the new dwelling has to be cited on the property. There's some discretionary standards for that. The ones in the forest zone were more straightforward. And so um we've been doing the ones in EFU under type-two and the ones in forest zones just over basically over the counter with a building permit, which is kind of like a type-one process. It's ministerial. Um, now the standards are the same in all the zones. And so we originally had our original proposal and what's in your packet right now is a type-two for everything, but we've started to realize because the state repealed the citing standards that were applicable in EFU, the standards aren't necessarily quite as discretionary as they were before, and we think that we could create two processes. Wherein if it was, if the county has good records that show that the house that's there now is there now and was cited there illegally in the first place, so we have a building permit from twenty years ago or thirty years ago or a land use permit from when we can tell we approved the dwelling and then they got their building permit. So it's really obvious that it was lawfully established. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense really to put them through a full land use review to replace that. Um, that is similar to what some other jurisdictions are doing, and we have had county council look at it and it seems to be a legitimate pathway forward, but we didn't get all that information pulled together till within the last week. So we would be recommending um this this change to basically establish a two-track process, depending upon how clear it is that the dwelling um to be replaced was lawful in the first place.
Thank you, Jennifer. That was much more articulate. So with all of that, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission recommend to the board adoption of, well, it's not two eighty-three, it's two eighty-five. ZDO two eighty-five. Um, text amendments include an attachment A with those minor changes proposed by staff. And that's it.
Any questions?
That was a lot.
Can you repeat all that, Martha?
Yes.
I probably could.
No.
Murk, I would recommend that we look at each one of these uh proposals, one through five separately for comment. Uh, I'm just suggesting that.
Um. Michael, I was uh thinking something very similar, that some of these aren't quite as confusing as the other. I have to say, I'm I'm really I'm really confused on some of this. Uh, it's gonna take a little more time than what I was given to digest and give a proper uh recommendation. I don't know if any more of my fellow planning commissioners feel that same way. Um, I wanna hear testimony from the public. I wanna uh before we uh make a decision on any of this, of course. Um. But let's, these are pretty groundbreaking changes to uh Blackmoss County's uh planning. So I, Tammy, you have something to say?
I do. I just really wanted to clarify something. Um, I read it in the packet, but I wanted to make sure it was mentioned. But I believe um ADUs will be taxed. So there will be monies to there to, is that correct? I'm not seeing you nodding your head, Martha. Are ADUs, I mean, there'll be a permitting process, but does it not become a part of property taxes and?
So, oh no, I made a face because I didn't know if that 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 was in the packet. Um, my understanding, and I am not the tax assessor, my understanding is that when you put a another dwelling on the property, they they will assess it and tax it. It is not necessarily the case with the RVs.
Okay, and I just, um, you, it was actually a response to somebody that had written in and you had
Oh, okay.
Where I read it, so
Thank you for reading the packet.
I think it's something um we need to really think about because um ADUs will have some support monies where RVs will not, meaning you know, uh parks, let's say, or roads or things of that nature.
Any other questions? Carrie?
Um, I'm assuming we're asking questions about specific aspects of Martha's um presentation, correct? Okay. So, and maybe because I didn't study the packet as closely as I should have, but I, your presentation also provided some additional information, which was really helpful for me. So, for example, um, I think you mentioned that the RVs needed to be connected to proper utilities. Um, and I'm assuming that's for water, wastewater and stormwater. And if that's the case, are, will they be? Um, is there a process for collecting SDCs and rates? Changes that go along with that, or how does that all work? And is that not true for, I'm assuming ADUs are, because it's outside, you don't have utilities that they're gonna connect to. It's just septic and wells probably, is my guess. But because these other the yellow spots or yellow polygons that we looked at, they're mostly in areas where public utility is available. And if they're gonna connect to public utility, I'm assuming that they will be permitted and will have um, you know, their relevant SDCs and rates suggested for that. Is that correct?
So the rates and the SDCs are determined by the actual service provider. Um, the county has service districts that provide those services. Um, and so I can't tell you for sure how they would look at RVs. Um, but ADUs, yes, I mean, that's that's what happens right now. Um, is that they're assessed system development charges when they connect to various utilities. In the rural areas, you're right, um, they would be on septic, you know, onsite wastewater systems. There are some water districts out there, um, but a lot of them would be on well.
So by changing our zoning, uh the uh by changing the ZDO, we're requiring um service providers to come up with additional set of rules on how that would be implemented? For RVs?
I don't know what their rules are right now. I mean, currently, um, if somebody were to get approved for say a hardship dwelling, a temporary dwelling for care, we require that that RV or manufactured home connect. So there is a process currently.
But that's temporary, no.
Those are for temporary, you're you're correct, but we require they hook up to um the appropriate, you know, sewage disposal and water.
But I I would imagine that if it was temporary, you would be hard-pressed to push for SDCs. And um perhaps the rate increases is definitely, you know, warranted, but if these are long-term rentals, they're gonna be there for long term. So I would think that the um the appropriate utilities should be um collecting the SDCs for services that they're providing, but without having all of that worked out, the, do, have we let the utilities know that this is coming down the pipe?
Uh, yes. Okay, so they should be notified, uh and I have had some conversations with the sewer, the largest sewer district in the urban area.
Okay. Um, and then the other question is, what is considered long-term? Um, so I asked this question because long time ago, um, most people remember city of Camby or Cannon Beach had um the, they had a provision of short-term leases, rentals, and so the folks that own homes would skirt that by renting it out for a month. But then, you know, charging them whatever that is, but only having people stay for the weekend. It didn't really matter, you know, whether you stayed for a whole month or whether you stayed for a weekend. Um, as long as they only rent it to one person, one party during that month's time. So what's considered long-term and and how do we actually um plan on enforcing whether somebody stays for that least amount of time or whether they just stay for a short period?
So we don't define long-term rental, but we do define short-term rental, and that is um for a period of up to thirty consecutive nights. Um, so I guess by default, a long term would be thirty-one or more nights at a time. Um, and that's how our zoning code defines it. And I believe that's how the county code defines it. Um, and so I don't know that um we don't regulate long-term rentals. We have no, we have no rental program. Um, there is a program to regulate short-term rentals. Um, I believe uh that was adopted into the county code and it's not being administered through planning. Um, so we have pretty limited knowledge about it. And so I guess if somebody's really trying to skirt the rules that badly, um, you know, it it would potentially fall into just a regular code enforcement issue. You know, we, you know, the county's code enforcement is complaint-driven and neighbor complains and says they're not meeting their requirements either of their short-term rental registration under the county code or of some sort of zoning um code regulation, and we would potentially enforce on that. Um, I don't, I, I think if if somebody rents a house for thirty days at a time and it's considered a long-term rental, I don't think we are gonna go and make sure somebody is staying there for each of those thirty days. Like, I I just don't think that that's something um that is practical or reasonable to to track. And I also think that the thirty days was intended to not have a constant turnover. So if it's rented for thirty days and it's empty for like twenty-eight of those days, I'm not sure that that's necessarily um a big problem, so.
Okay. Um. Uh, what about decommissioning of RVs? So once the, you know, RVs are gonna become, I mean, they're gonna get to a place where they're no longer usable. So how do you, is there a process for how you would take them off the lot once they are in? Who, who monitors that and who implements that?
This, this is where I may phone a friend um named Cheryl Bell or Jennifer Hughes, and so uh, you know, the, the the RV needs to be owned either by the property owner or the tenant, the person who's living in it. Um, and so because it's on private property, I don't believe the county gets involved in the removal of that at all, but I'm gonna hand it off now because I see Cheryl unmuted.
Yeah, um. Hi, everybody. Cheryl Bell, uh Assistant Director for the Department and um work with Development Services, including building codes and a building official. Uh, because the um RVs do need to be operable to be part of the pro- of this program, they would have to be, in theory, able to drive or be towed off the site. So at the end of the time that they're being used, they'd have to be removed. It would be a violation if they were inoperable, so that's a, that could be a violation under this, under this provision and under current county code.
But and that would be code enforcement that would enforce those rules?
Yes.
And again, complaint-driven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, back to Martha. Um, I'm really concerned about the um both RV, I'm not as concerned about the ADUs because I feel like there's a, there's a prop, you know, um permitting process in place um that we can follow, but I'm a little more con- concerned about RVs and especially in areas where, again, I'm going back to the yellow polygon within your maps. And it appeared to be um very near um waterways. Um, Clackamas and Willamette River waterways. How is there, I know that, you know, we talked about flood potentials and not putting them in a flood um flooding hazards, but how are we dealing with the the buffer, the distance from the waterways as well as the um wetlands that may or may not have been identified? Will the property owners be required to do similar types of land investigation before they are allowed to um place these RVs? Like a development project would do if they were to come in, you know, not all of the land um futures are known when the development comes in and they end up doing a lot of studies to identify where the um um wetlands are or aren't. And so I'm just curious as to what kind of procedures you have play in play or will put put into place to assure that we're not going to be um harming, you know, environmental impact with these uses.
Um, well, that's a very good question. Thank you. Um, so to cite an RV as a second dwelling, um, it would need to go through what Jennifer had just has previously described as a type-one process. Um, so there would be a review and planning would look at a site plan and would look at the proposal against all of the um applicable criteria. In this case, an RV would have to meet all of the same sighting standards as any other structure um that was being, that was being put on a lot within any of these protected areas, um be it a stream buffer, um uh wetland buffer, we have some habitat conservation area district that allows a certain amount of development, but mitigation. So whatever the applicable rules are for any other structure on that property, the RV would have to meet those. Um, and so that's, and they actually would be prohibited within um areas regulated by the floodplain management district, and that would include floodway and the hundred-year floodplain.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Michael?
Uh, yeah, I, I have a, a couple of questions. Uh, uh, this has to do with the first proposal on the ADU. What constitutes a nuisance property and who determines that?
That is a good question. Uh, I have to open up that section, so bear with me just a minute. The specific language in state law references. Thought I had it right in front of me. Bear with me just a second. Cause we had that question as well. So it says specifically that it is not subject to an order declaring it a nuisance or subject to any pending action under ORS one oh five five fifty to one oh five six hundred. And I don't have those open right now. But I did look at them and it's, I recall, there's a lot of, um, language in there about, um, drugs, um, and other types of nuisance Cheryl may know, but she may not, so, uh, I can look up the ORS, um, but it really has to do with an order declaring a nuisance or other pending action. And so that is something that presumably we can look up to see if there's any pending action. Obviously, if there's some sort of code enforcement action that's easy for us to look up, I'm not sure entirely how we would look it up if there's some sort of action through the sheriff's department. Um, but it is not us in planning deciding that there's a nu- it's a nuisance property.
Yeah, it, it's also a, a identified, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's also, um, outlined in county code. It's in county code. Um, chapter six point oh eight, we actually define a nuisance property for the county. It's a property on which three or more nuisance activities exist or have occurred in the last sixty-day period. Or which twelve or more nuisance activities exist or have occurred in a twelve-month period. And then we go on and define those nuisance properties. Um, including, uh, a lot of them are, um, related to law enforcement actions, multiple law enforcement actions, code enforcement violations and things like that. Um, so it gives us the ability to enforce on those nuisance properties.
And so, uh, who determines that?
It's a combination with code enforcement and county council, um, because most of these involve, um, um, law enforcement activity with a sheriff's office typically for Clackamas County, um, or with other local agencies like Oregon State Police. So it's typically includes county council in that determination.
So, uh, we, we get, uh, we get this piece of property, uh, set up and it's approved. And then the nuisance occurs, so then it becomes a nuisance property or is it, uh, predetermined? What, h- h- how does this work? Let, let's say, let's say somebody, uh, puts, um, puts this ADU on there and it, it's okay right now, but then later on it becomes a nuisance. Uh, let's say all of a sudden you got, uh, kids, uh, playing loud music, uh, running up and down the street with skateboards and motorcycles and whatever, it becomes a nuisance then, the, the, how do we enforce that?
Um, it's a good question. Uh, so the, the, the things that you gave examples of wouldn't fall into that nuisance category. Typically, when we do this, it has to do with, um, kind of once again, working with law enforcement. So it, it tends to be a lot of illegal activity, very serious code violations. In that case, currently, we do have a nuisance property process which goes through code enforcement. And that would be the same situation for an ADU that fell into that nuisance violation.
Okay. Uh, my, my second question had to do with, uh, both ADUs and, uh, the RV. Let's talk about the RV. Uh, somebody owns a piece of property, or maybe they don't own the piece of property. Let's say they're leasing that property. They're not the primary owner and they put an RV on there. Is that, is that okay? And they, uh, they rent that RV out?
Uh, no, one of, one of the state standards, um, is, includes that the existing dwelling on the property has to be the primary residence of at least one of the property owners.
Okay, so the pro- the property has to be owned by the person that is actually allowing the RV on there?
Yes.
Okay, now, if somebody puts an RV or an ADU, uh, and the owner's okay with it, and then they sublease it out. Um, the, you know, the original person that was in there, they say the RV, they decide they wanna sublet, sublet that out to someone else. Is that permitted?
To sublet what? The RV?
The RV or the ADU?
So you would get, uh, you would not get both an ADU and an RV on a property. So if you have a primary dwelling and an RV, you can, you can rent out the RV, but the dwelling has to be owner-occupied.
Okay, I got that. But let, let's say it's just an, um, the owner. And they have, uh, allowed an RV to go on there and they're renting out the RV to someone. And that person decides they wanna move on to something else, but they wanna sublet that RV to someone else. Is that possible?
I, that would be a violation of the zoning code if they did that. And that would, uh, go through code enforcement.
Okay.
Again, if.
Seems like we always have problems with this code enforcement. I don't know how many times that has come up. And we seem like we don't have enough people in, on the county to support the code enforcement action. Uh, uh, w- we just keep building a problem here. I appreciate your answer and you did a lot of hard work on this, Martha, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Louise?
Yeah, in follow-up to the idea that Michael was talking about. Um, let's say you put up a ADU on your property and all according to code, everything's good, right? And then down the line, that property becomes a nuisance property. According to the law, law and lot of law enforcement actions, illegal activity, on and on and on. And it's totally declared a nuisance property, period. You've got this separate additional structure. At any point, is the law going to require that that ADU be torn down? Um, or just go vacant? I, what would you do? What would happen in that situation?
So I think the answer is technically it would have to be converted to something that's not an ADU, but that's legal in the, in the zone. So it'd be a conversion to a storage building or something else that's allowed under the zoning now. Getting to that point with a chronic nuisance property, I would suspect there'd be a whole lot of other code enforcement action going on at that point. But technically, yes, the eighty, and we could require an A- the ADU to be to converted to something else, forgot to that point.
Converted, but not necessarily torn down.
Right, yeah, I, cause there's a lot of other things that would qualify. I mean, you can have outbuildings and things in pretty much every zone. So most likely they could convert it to something else, but the alternative would be that they would not be a chronic nuisance anymore. You know, that they would clean that part up and then the ADU could stay. So I kind of think this is all gonna be intrinsically sort of like tied together at the point you get to that, you know, with code enforcement. And it's more likely that this is gonna be something that would prevent somebody from doing it in the first place. Um, but again, I don't know how many people in chronic nuisance state are gonna be coming in trying to build an ADU. It's very expensive. I, I think it's, I think it's unlikely to come up very often.
Okay, yeah, the RV is easy. RVs can be pulled away or driven away, I assume, if they're working. But the ADU is a little bit more permanent structure. It could be actually part of your main primary dwelling. So just wanted to follow up on that. Thank you.
I have, I have a follow-up question on the RVs. We're only talking about RVs that are gonna put on private property. These RVs that are sitting on the side of the road, uh, public highways and that type of stuff uh, are not gonna be affected by this, are they? Uh, I'm very concerned about, you know, I go down the road all the time and I see these homeless people with RVs parked on the side of the road. We're not affecting that, or are we just, this is not gonna help us with that problem?
Uh, you, you're correct. This is only about placing an RV on a property that has a dwelling on it.
Kevin, I'm gonna give you opportunity. Thank you for joining us. I'm glad you could make it from work.
Yeah, uh, thank you. I don't have any question. I reviewed the packet and got the second half of Martha's presentation, so I'm good.
You're on mute.
Thank you, Mur. Um, I noticed like in the state limitations, the state says there cannot be any short-term rentals in either case as well. And I was just wondering if, what is the consequence at the state level if someone were to violate that? In other words, I know one of the concerns that a number of people have voiced is the, the, these are going to become short-term rentals. But the state prohibits that. So I was just wondering if there's a consequence at the state level for someone who violates that, because it is a state rule.
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
So it's up to us?
Yes.
To enforce, okay.
Yeah, essentially, essentially when the state passes these types of things and says to the county, you can do a new land use if you want to, but here's all the parameters. Really, the state's telling us what the rules are and then we get to tell the people what the rules are. So it's, uh, it would be nice if it came along with some code enforcement at the state level, but it does not.
Yeah, I was hoping, but thank you.
A- and I have a, of course, I have something to say. I did a little investigation, uh, a few hours ago and that was how does HUD look at a, a temporary structure? How does HUD look at a vehicle or an RV? And that's exactly how they look at it. They look at it as a temporary structure. They do not look at it as a permanent dwelling. So as with that classification or that outlook at, by the federal government, it doesn't have to meet construction standards, meaning HFCs or things that could be toxic to people within that living area over long periods of time. So it's something there that we're gonna have to consider that we're allowing something if we pass this for RVs that hasn't really been approved for full-time rental. Or full-time occupancy. And I think that's very important. This is something that, you know, these vehicles have a life expectancy. So do we put an expiration date on them? And that's something I was wondering about too. Uh, I remember listening to a business meeting that was talking about RVs. How much does it cost to pick up an RV off the highway and get rid of it? And it was determined it costs about four thousand dollars a piece. So that's fairly expensive just to get rid of one. It'd be much easier to pull it out in your field or whatever and rent the thing even though it's probably beyond its life. I really having a hard time justifying full-time rental. Even though we went through this with short-term rentals, we're, or not short, excuse me, during the homeless, uh, crisis, back when I became a, uh, planning commissioner, that I wanted to find solutions. I wanted to work on solutions. And this was one of the ideas that we looked at was accessing RVs for temporary, uh, shelter for people to get off the street and back on their feet again. I personally don't feel that these should be permanent dwellings, but, um, and wonder how we're gonna look at this ten years down the line. And I know there's not a question in that. Sorry, Martha.
Hey, hey, Murf, listen, I work with the county, uh, sheriff's department, Clackamas County Sheriff's Department. They have to pay folks to haul away these, uh, RVs. And it costs us as taxpayers a lot of money for that to happen. There, they have hazardous waste in there. You just can't junk them.
That's where the four thousand dollars came from, Michael, was what does it cost the county to rid these abandoned RVs that are left on the street? And so that's a considerable amount. I, you know, so something to consider here is, yeah, what's gonna happen to these when they, uh, become uh, past their lifetime? Anyway, let's move on. If nobody has anything else to add? Anything?
To ask.
Have we received any correspondence on the matter?
Wait, wait, wait a minute, Murf. I, I have, I have one more question for, uh, for Martha. I- in the write-up here, under minor standard change of the comprehensive plan and ZDOs, your reference removal of reference to a zoning district that has been repealed. How many zoning districts have been repealed?
Only, only one since I've been working here.
Over the years, I, a handful. All of our former far- farm and forest zones were renamed because state law changed so much in the early nineties. So a bunch of them were, I mean, I don't know, a bunch, like five or six were repealed. Uh, we've had a couple of industrial zones that have been repealed. A lot of times what has happened is areas were like specially zoned a certain way and then annexed to a city. And so the zone just doesn't, technically, there's no more land that exists anymore with that zoning designation. But don't worry, we still have almost fifty, Commissioner Wilson, so where there's no shortage.
Okay, okay. I, 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 I was just interested in that because, you know, it seems like we put things in place and they never go away.
Yeah, well, I'll, I love to repeal zones because the book is, you know, like this big, so. So I would, if I had to guess, I'd say we've repealed eight or ten over sixty years, so.
Okay, so, so it's primarily because of state regulations that have changed. Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, state regulations have changed or cities have annexed certain areas that we had zoned a certain way. Those have been the reasons typically, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Have we received any correspondence on this matter other than those uh, included in the meeting packets? And I've already received a couple just late. Is there any more on top of that, just prior to our start?
Uh, no, just what, what you were sent today.
Thank you, Martha. On your presentation. Okay, uh, moving on to testimony. Jennifer will provide an assessment of the.
You don't need to read that part, Murf. Those are the stage directions. Uh, but Jennifer will do that. So, um, we have fifteen people in the audience. Um, I assume that many, if not all, will wish to speak. Um, normally, we do three minutes. That's pretty standard at the board, pretty standard here. I would suggest that with fifteen people, there's not a reason to shorten it beyond three minutes. Ellen has graciously offered to time and I would say, again, the au- with an audience this size, we, just maybe a little warning, Ellen, that they're kind of at their three minutes and should wrap up. We probably don't need to be like, you know, turning off the mic at three minutes. Um, I did hear Commissioner Wilson say something about taking comments by subject. I guess I would maybe recommend, it's not up to me, but that's a lot of testimony. It's a lot of in and out of the Zoom room. So I might suggest you take all the testimony at once from each person and then you could shape your discussion and deliberations by topic and that might be a good idea, you know, kind of maybe, I'd almost argue work backwards from the ones that are a little less, um, complex. And then, you know, finishing up with the ones that are more so, but maybe take all your testimony, uh, at once. So are there objections to that approach?
Well, I think the CPOs and the handlers have a little more time.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. And I'll just say that now, um, for those of you in the audience, if you are the official representative of your CPO, meaning that you are here to present the CPO's recommendation that they've arrived at through your adopted process for that, then you have five minutes. If you just happen to be a member of a CPO, but you're here, you know, speaking on your own behalf, then it's just like anyone else. But who, but if you're here officially representing the CPO, then, uh, Murf has a, has a spot for you in the, uh, in the script, so.
And Jennifer, I highly agree that we do just what you described. And we take the ones that are a little simpler to solve first. Um, okay, now is the time for public testimony. If you want to provide testimony, you will utilize a raise hand button feature in Zoom. Attendees on PC or iPad, you have a raised hand button on the Zoom bar, top, bottom, depending on the device. Attendees by telephone use star nine to activate the raised hand feature and star six to unmute. When the moderator switches you over to provide testimony, your screen will look different for a moment. Primarily, you will see participants' cameras, not just the one who is speaking. The moderator will call upon you when it is time for you to provide testimony. For the record, please begin by stating your name, where you are from, and who you are representing. Once you have provided your testimony, your mic will be muted and your screen will be returned to normal. And I also'd like to remind you that we are here to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. That's what we're here for, not to decide the, the law, so to speak. They have the final word. Are there any representatives of community planning organizations or hamlets here to speak? Each organization will have five minutes to testify. Please use the raise hand feature if you are in the audience and wish to testify as an official representative on behalf of the CPO or hamlet.
Uh, so I see one hand raised, although it's been raised for a while. So Lisa Messina, oh, she put her hand up. I do not see any hands for official representatives of the CPO. So, yeah, there's no hands up for CPO chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, optional additional language. Okay, let me skip that. Sorry, I'm reading from the script if you can't tell. Now is the time for general public testimony. Does any person wish to speak on this proposal? Each person will have three minutes to testify. Please raise your hand.
So again, this is general public testimony. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission on any element of tonight's proposal, please use the raise hand feature, and we will call on you in the order, uh, in which you appear. So I have, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna apologize in advance for all the mispronunciations I will probably be guilty of this evening. But I see David Lithgow, and Darcy will bring you into the Zoom room. Please begin by stating your name and area of residence.
My name is David Lithgow. I live in Welch's, Oregon.
Great, go ahead.
Uh, I am a member of the Hoodland CPO Land Use Committee. However, I'm speaking on my own behalf. Uh, several issues here, and first I will say I am against having RVs uh, allowed, uh, in these zones. I, I agree with Murph's uh, statement regarding the lifetime of an RV. I, I don't know what they are officially, but they couldn't be more than 10 years, I wouldn't suspect. I, I realize that they don't have to meet current construction standards. But there are two parts that, uh, concern me, and one is snow load for these, uh, RVs. We have distinct snow levels in the mountain area and, and snow load requirements that are higher than most of the rest of the county. The other concern is foundation requirements. An ADU would have to have a full foundation. RVs do not. And the foundations help stop spread of fire. Uh, wildfire could go under an RV, but has to detour around an ADU, I imagine. So that's another concern. Uh, another one is an ADU being built would have to pay system development fees, I imagine. Uh, which I guess is essentially a tax to the builder. Uh, RVs do not have to pay a system development fee. And they also don't have to pay taxes. Uh, I'm concerned about the RV occupancy overwhelming our schools and, and also our infrastructures, roads and et cetera. Uh, one other comment is on code violations. You said it's driven by code violations. I currently have a couple code violation requests uh, in the county, and I've been informed that unless there's a second one, they will not take action. So I'm wondering if you need to, uh, complaints uh, to take action on, on misbehaving RVs or ADUs. Uh, that's pretty much all of my comments. Uh, thanks for all your work on this, and I hope it's resolved in my favor.
Thank you, David. Thanks for showing up.
Okay, uh, so we, and I am making a note of the questions that we got, are getting asked, so we can respond at the, at the end to those. Um, Lisa Messina is next.
Thank you. I'm unmuting. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Super. I just want to start by saying thank you for all the very thoughtful work that everyone is doing. I am, my name is Lisa Messina. I'm a resident, full-time resident of Welch's, along with my husband and our son. And, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to comment on RVs specifically out of the five different things that you've mentioned uh, are up for recommendation, uh, during this process. So I'll just start by saying I agree with what Dave Lithgow has said. Uh, as a resident of the Hoodland area and specifically Welch's, there are a couple of things that, um, seem important. So one of them is if the responses to the survey of 579 people, uh, 41% of 579 people have said sure, no problem. That sort of looks to me like 59% did not say sure, no problem to RVs. It looks to me like more than half of the population are not saying, we think this is absolutely fine, that we will use a vehicle as a residence. So I'd just like to ask this group, the commissioners, um, the team, to please take a close look at that. I feel like that is a very important, um, set of feedback from your survey. And the second thing I would ask about that is I'm curious to know where those yeses are concentrated. Are they all over the place? Are they in specific places? Are there some areas where folks have said, so for example, Hoodland, have folks generally said, no, we really don't think this is better for our community? And if that's the case, does the county have the ability to say, oh, it's fine here, but not fine there? Can there be, uh, more refinement of the statutes or regulations? Uh, the other thing I'll say, and I'm not watching the time, so I know you are, but, uh, I, I think we already have pretty generous regulations that serve the needs of those who are looking to use use RVs as temporary dwellings to care for folks or while they're building a permanent dwelling. So it's not clear to me why we want to take a vehicle and turn a vehicle into a home, a permanent residence. It seems to me that we really ought to be thinking about increasing our housing stock, our apartments, et cetera. That's a permanent home. So let's focus on, you know, multifamily and other sorts of circumstances that fit better into communities in terms of being taxed and also then be, you know, having revenue that's available to support all the services and infrastructure that those homes, residences need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, and next we have Dennis Tilka.
Hi, my name is Dennis Tilka. I live in Welch's. I'm, uh, against the RVs definitely, but I want to address ADUs first. I know ADUs require a two-acre minimum lot size. And I figured out an easy way to circumvent this by instead of building an ADU, just purchase a tiny home or a park trailer like the ones at RV Village in Welch's. They are licensed by the State of Oregon and fit within the definition of RVs as in ZDO 202, thereby circumventing the two minimum acre lots. I mean, two acre, two acre minimum lot size. Plus, if it's an RV, they won't be assessed any, uh, development fees, or they won't be assessed, uh, property taxes. So that was another reason why it would be a good idea if we're gonna have a minimum lot size, we should have a minimum lot size on the RVs and the ADUs. Okay, now go back to RVs. Since the county can't regulate RVs through the building code, I would suggest the county require RV campsite pads be constructed to accommodate the placement of RV and regulate the construction of the RV pad itself through the building codes. That way, the county buildings department will be involved with the pad construction to ensure all setbacks. The county soils department will evaluate the septic tank to make sure the septic tank can handle the RV and the house at the same time, and make sure the RV pad is properly connected for the septic tank or to the sewer. Then the county planning, I mean, plumbing department could ensure the RV pad has a weatherized water connection with portable water at a certain pressure and verify the water source is lawful. The county's electrical department would ensure that, uh, there's adequate power for the house and RV, and no one will be using extension cords. And if the RV is placed in a so- snow zone, require a canopy be built that would withstand the snow load, preventing the flat roofs of RV being collapsed. I have been impacted by trees and tree branches at my house several times. One of them took off my chimney and burnt down my house. And I walked away from it, but if I was an RV, I would be dead. Another one was it, I lost two vehicles and part of my garage roof by another tree. Again, if I was an RV, I'd be dead. Okay, another reason I oppose RVs is because RVs do not pay property taxes. And many of these people will require county services such as schools, fire, police, healthcare. How is the county, how is the county going to pay for these additional demands on county services? Either they're going to have to increase our taxes, or they're gonna have to lower our services for what we have now. This is a bad idea, and I hope the commissioner recommends against the RVs. And in conclusion, after reading the staff report, notice of decision and exhibits, I was overwhelmed by the size and complexity of the agendas tonight. Tonight's agenda should have been broken down into several meetings because it is possible for anyone to have the time to read this, understand this, and make any coherent recommendations to a procedure so large and complex. That's why I had to just limit my comments to just ADUs and RVs. And in conclusion, I think it'd be a great idea if we keep talking about code enforcement, to have somebody here. You guys need to have somebody from the code enforcement department here to answer questions because you guys blame the code enforcements for everything, but we never hear from them saying, well, we can do that, or we can't do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dennis. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Um, I do see, uh, like a Q and A. There's a little one in there. I think, oh, okay.
Yeah, you're right. We do have somebody who submitted a question in writing. Okay, see that.
And the only other thing I, I definitely want those who testified to hear is to please show up at the Board of County Commissioners hearing as well. They, they need to hear your questions and concerns.
So I, I will read the question in chat, um, here in just one second. But I do, we ha- we have 15 people in the audience, and of course, only three have spoken. So I just want to make sure. Is there anyone else who here, who is here tonight who would like to make comment to the Planning Commission? I, if so, please raise your hand. I have Adam Boyce.
All right, can you hear me? Okay. Um, I just have a quick comment. Uh, first, thank you for your time and effort in preparing all this. I know, like, the last comment, i- it is complex. Um, the question or comment, I guess I'd have, um, and I'm from Oregon City, sorry. Um, and I, my wife grew up in the area. I grew up in Tigard, but um, with COVID and everything, our family, our young family has faced a lot of kind of financial pressure. Um, and I, and I really am interested in this process as it, is it creates opportunity for families like mine with, with young kids. And, uh, I guess I just want to offer the opinion that so much of the discussion in the first public hearing, um, a few weeks ago, and, and often in this meeting, and I expect in the, the next meeting, we'll focus a lot on the, the complexities and the code enforcement and the concerns people have. And, and I appreciate that. I recognize those are, are real and valid. Um, and I don't mean to dismiss that at all. I, I just would like to make sure that there's focus on the purpose. It seems like this whole, um, legislation was passed is, is to provide more opportunities, um, provide more financially, um, provide for those who, who need it, right? Um, lower income housing options for, for people who don't currently have options um, to live where they want to live, like myself. You know, we want to have some property, to have goats and chickens, and it's just, it's not really viable for us at the moment. Um, and if this is passed, I think it could be a good step forward in that direction. So, um, I just wanted to offer that opinion and maybe encourage any, I, I haven't seen data provided, um, around the, the reasonings or, or the current situation of affordable housing in the county. I'd love to, for that to be part of the discussion. Um, anyways, thank you for your time and, and consideration.
Thank you, Adam. Uh, anyone else, Jennifer?
So there's no other hands at the moment. I'm gonna go ahead and read the question from the chat, and I think Martha can probably respond, or, or I can. Um, and while I'm doing that, just kind of last call to the audience. If you are interested in testifying for the Planning Commission tonight, please use the raise hand feature. The question is from Erica Strong, who asks, hi, can you please clarify RV regulation? Does a secondary dwelling RV have to meet structure or vehicle code? You said that the RV's environmental impact would be regulated as structures, but your presentation says RVs are regulated as vehicles, not structures. It's a great question. Uh, Martha, do you want to field that?
I will do my best. And yes, that is a great question. Um, and I understand your confusion. And so RVs are not, um, subject to the same building codes as a structure. Um, they are built and inspected somewhere else, um, because they are technically vehicles. But what I meant was that, um, when, if somebody were to want to come in and cite an RV as a second dwelling, there are some provisions in our zoning code um, that they have to meet, including setbacks from property lines, et cetera. One of the provisions that we added specifically to our zoning code was to address this concern, um, about the fact that they are not structures, and so they wouldn't ordinarily be subject to a lot of the regular standards in our, in our zoning code, um, particularly those related to, um, overlay districts and riparian areas and floodplain. And so we specifically added language that says something to the effect of, well, for the purposes of citing this within one of these overlay areas, um, we are going to look at this as a structure when it comes to the specific citing standards, setback standards, and things like that. So it's not that it's regulated as a structure generally. It's just that for this specific purpose, under our zoning code, we're gonna treat it the same as a structure when it comes to, um, natural areas that we're protecting.
So things like setbacks from rivers and streams, things like removing vegetation out of buffer areas in order to cite the RV, all of those things, it would be treated as though it were a structure, but it is not. And then Martha had mentioned earlier about the floodplain, and just to clarify, the floodplain regulations that we are required to adhere to, um, under the federal flood insurance, um, rules, do not allow an RV in a floodplain for residential purposes like this without it being on a foundation. And it can't be on a foundation to meet the state standards to allow these RVs as a second dwelling. And so that's the reason, one of the reasons we said they can't be in a floodplain, because the, the two sets of regulations. one of the reasons we said they can't be in a floodplain, because the the two sets of regulations are not um compatible. Uh, and then one, one of the members of the audience, uh Lisa Messino, one was hoping that Mr. Boyce would clarify his testimony as to whether you were referring to ADUs, um, RVs or both. So you're back in the room, Mr. Boyce, if you're willing to answer that question.
Sure, um, and don't mind the toddlers here. Um. Yeah, so I I think it would be both. Um, I I see opportunity for tiny homes um that are built um, for for kind of long-term habitation, a little bit separate from, you know, typical RVs, but they're technically zoned as RVs. Um, but um, but yeah, primarily my comment was was as um AD, ADUs.
Thank you. All right, that is all that's in chat. I have no other hands raised. So uh going once, going twice. Anybody else who wishes to testify, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, Mr. Chair, I think we're complete with public testimony.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Martha, for the answers. And just a little clarification. You said you were mentioning uh no RVs and floodplains. It would probably be floodways, wouldn't it, identified by FEMA?
Both. So both floodways where the county allows, I'll say virtually no development. There are a few little exceptions to that. Uh, but also the hundred-year floodplain, and that's because of this requirement that FEMA has for the RVs to be on a foundation, and that can't be done through these rules. So five hundred-year floodplain would be okay, but not the one hundred-year.
Thank you. Is the commission stop the public testimony portion of this hearing? And or do commissioners want to hold the written record open or continue the hearing at a di- um for additional?
Murph could ask a question real quick before you close it. Um, uh, one of the folks testifying mentioned that um the RV be put on a slab or, you know, a foundation, if you will, a a pad or slab. But then Jennifer mentioned, at least in regards to floodplains, you can't put a concrete slab down. The, in any other area besides a floodplain, could you put a con- could we insist that a concrete pad be placed before the RV is placed? I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Sure. And and just to clarify also, Louise, you, the commission can continue to ask staff questions all throughout this process. It's just the public testimony piece that we'd be closing. So no worries there about us continuing to talk. Um, and yeah, you're you're, it is two different things, but I can see why that was not clear. So putting a pad that the RV would like park on, which I think maybe was what one person was mentioning, kind of like you would have if you were in a state park with RV hookups or something, where we would somehow regulate some sort of a park. At least, that's the way I took it. Some sort of a parking pad where you'd have maybe a pedestal with the utilities and all of that. Um. There's nothing that prevents us from requiring that in implementing this RV bill. The floodplain regulations are more, I think, about anchoring the RV. So because the, what they're trying to have some construction standards, so it doesn't, you know, sort of float down the river, basically. I think that's the reason those exist. Um, now granted, there's all kinds of other vehicles that that can happen to, but I think that's the reason. So if it's being used to live in, it's required to actually be put on a foundation and essentially like anchored the way you would have manufactured home. And that's not allowed by this RV bill. But we could have a parking pad requirement where they'd have utility homes and stuff. That would be okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Tammy?
Um, just a couple things. I think it's just in my blood to respond to citizens, because I do it daily. Jennifer, there were a couple just questions and comments from some of our folks that testified. One, I believe it was David, who said something about you have to have two uh code enforcement complaints. And I don't think that's exactly true. I think if your complaint is anonymous, then you have to have two identical complaints. But if you put your name in at the county with your complaint, then you only need one, and and that name isn't ever shared other than to the code and code officer. But we're, so I just wanted to state that so that David knew that. Um, unless I'm wrong and somebody out there wants to correct it. That's what I tell my people. Also, were there some other um? You were ta- I saw you taking notes. Were there a couple things you wanted to clarify?
Let me look back through my notes. Um, I think regarding code enforcement, I'm, I suspect that Cheryl can respond on this question about the two complaints, the anonymous complaint. I do want to clarify one thing you said, which I believe I'm correct on this, and Cheryl's gonna tell me if I'm wrong. Um, when you make a complaint and you are not anonymous, if I call, I don't call into Clackamas County, because that's really not my role. But if I did call into Clackamas County and lodge a complaint, um, if I give my name, I can request confidentiality. Um, I don't have to. So if I choose not to, they'll give my name to everybody. But if I say I want confidentiality, then they will not unless ordered to do so by essentially the district attorney. And I think that that's the way it used to be, and Cheryl's gonna tell me if I have that wrong. And then Cheryl, would you respond to this two complaints anonymous complaint question?
Absolutely. Yeah, great. No, this is such a great question, and and thank you, Commissioner Stevens, for bringing it forward. Um, we do not do anonymous complaints. We can't because of um legal rules, but we do confidential complaints. So the the process that Jennifer provided is exactly that people can choose to be um confidential or non-confidential. If they choose to be confidential, the name is held in confidence, not on any of our and public-facing documents. But if we do go to court and we are mandated in court, we do provide that information. Um, you're correct about the the differences in that one and two. Um, it has to do with the severity of the violation. Um, if the violation is uh, we have a kind of a ranking standard of those violations. And for many of those, the hu- health and life safety ones, only one complaint needs to come in. And we will go ahead and open the code enforcement case and force on it. If it is of a lower standard, that's where exactly the the process you said, maybe if it's like a setback, um, which isn't quite as life safety threatening. If it's one, um, if it's one confidential, we need another one. Or some of the ones that are really on the very low end of the set, then really we do need complaint, two complaints to do it. Um, I'd be happy to provide maybe some follow-up links, like they give that process for everybody. We do have it laid out.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you, Cheryl.
So I went back through my notes, and the only question I had logged was the one you just asked, or, you know, addressed, Tammy, about the two complaints. Um, that there was one other thing that I actually was hoping Martha could clarify. I should know this, and I'm, and I'm not finding it in the recesses of my my brain at the moment. So somebody who testified talked about that circumventing the two acre, this sort of questions. We got two different housing options, and the rules for these are not identical, right? Because they're two separate bills, and they weren't synced up together, and that happens all the time. Um, but then we have to figure out how to navigate that. So it was this question about circumventing the two-acre minimum that applies for an ADU. By, I think the point was doing something that would meet the RV bill, but really kind of be a whole lot like an ADU. I think that was the sort of argument that was being made. And so this idea that you could do a tiny home or a park model that's regulated as an RV on a lot that's less than two acres. And I guess Martha, what I can't remember is the bill says for RVs that it has to be, like, it has to be mobile, right? It has to be capable of being driven away. Is that correct for the RV? I may not have the language, right?
The language is um, so now you're gonna make me look this up.
Sorry.
No, no, that's totally fine. Um, because I want to give you the exact language. It has to be titled and shall not have been rendered structurally immobile. Is the actual language. That's interesting. So as long as it is not rendered structurally immobile. But I think the important piece about that is that it's not really a way to get around the two-acre minimum lot size. You're either an RV or you're an ADU. And if it's an ADU, then it, you have to meet all of the ADU standards and the two-acre minimum lot size. If if you have a mobile sort of tiny home RV structure, if the piece of this package that involves allowing for ADUs' second dwelling is not passed, then you would just simply not be able to do it. It's not a way of getting around the ADU thing. It's just a different allowance. Is that?
Yeah, I think that's right. I think I just was think, wondering about this, you know, sort of, it's this question, and Martha and I have talked about this, where when does an RV look a whole lot like, you know, it's sort of some things, and there's this blurry line between what is an RV and what is not an RV. And when you get into these questions about things like, I quote, tiny homes, it becomes this very sort of gray area of who's taking responsibility for that. Is it a vehicle? Is it a structure? What is it exactly? So.
A lot of tiny homes are on trailers with wheels, for whatever reason, and they stay on those trailers with wheels. So in a way, they're mobile. They can just be hooked up and dragged along like an RV. So I think if someone's trying to circumvent and make that tiny home an RV, nah, you could probably do that, leaving it on the trailer with the wheels, I think.
Excuse me, we still have public testimony open, and we on. I think we need to deliberate after we close public testimony. Am I correct?
Well, I think the public testimony, I, you may not have said it, Murph, but there's nobody else to testify. So the the public testimony is effectively closed.
We're not in a quasi judicial, then I take it, so, okay.
I I I have a question. I know you probably don't know the answer, Martha. But it it's state mandating that uh two acres is the requirement. Do you know why that was put in there? Two, two acres?
I do not. I just know that it's there.
I mean, I I got an acre of property here, and I got plenty of room for another piece of property on my acres. But I, you know, I understand if you, you know, it's a state law, so that's it.
I have one, and this is uh, is there a way to track? If we pass this, can we, is there gonna be a way to track the RVs? Are we gonna be able to map where they are? And the reason I ask is this can change a congressional district. Am I correct? Because we're adding population, and we're able to shift lines because of that. And if we have no way to track that, we don't know if we are shifting. Um, we need to know what's going into special districts also, so we can fund our schools. And if we're doing this without taxing, or, you know, if it just is, if we're just gonna put our RVs out on properties and leave it at that without any track, how do you know what your census is is accurate or not?
So we would anticipate um that we would have a way to track it as proposed. It would be a type one application, so we would have a record of those. I I don't, I thi- I s- I think probably for purposes of the census, they would be counting in in different ways and might not rely upon that. But we would have it if we needed it. So, yeah, there will be a way to track.
Good. Thank you. Kevin?
So Murph, just to touch base on your census and the congressional district. So since that is measured every ten years, I mean, we wouldn't have to worry about this till twenty thirty. And I mean, we we have probably a lot more people moving out of the state than would move into RVs. So I think that wouldn't be. And a question, Jennifer, Martha, has the county, has anyone come to the county and asked the question, said, hey, I want you to do this. I got RVs ready to go on this. Like, do we have any indication of how many RVs of people, if the county decides to do this, would even be willing to do this? Or are we looking at, I mean, we're looking maybe at, you know, ten to fifty, maybe in these areas of the county? Because I, I'm getting the sense this is not gonna be as big as problem as we're hearing. I think we're more gonna worry about the RVs that we see across in Multloma County on the highways and that that are really public health nuisances and that. I don't think we're gonna see that as much in the areas. I mean, I know there's some areas of Sandy that have a lot, that have got more code enforcement things in the city. Sandy is taking care of that, but I I don't see that being as big a thing, at least not in my mind. Do you have any sense of that?
Um, well, the short answer is no. Um, I don't, I think your sense is probably um sort of on track. It's not gonna be this massive proliferation. There is some cost of entry, um, you know, associated with the RV. Somebody would have to permit all of the utilities go through the type, type one land use application um in order to do it properly. I don't have a sense for it. This is very new legislation. Um, and I don't know that any other counties have even allowed this yet, although Deschutes County may have by now. I know they were working on it as well. I think that um as far as ADUs are concerned, um again, you know, there's a cost associated. Not everyone is gonna want to or be able to build an ADU. And I think if we think about context, um, ADUs in the urban area have been allowed for, since the mid nineteen nineties. Um, just a search based on permit history. I, they, they now make up maybe less, not maybe, they make up less than one percent of the total sort of housing stock or the number of lots that could do it. Um, and so I think maybe there's some more interest in it now. If we looked at the past ten years, there might be a little bit of a ramp up. But I still think we're looking at a very small percentage increase. Um, particularly with the ADUs, with the RVs, we hear a lot of um feedback that these are already out there. Um, and so I guess the key would be getting to, um, you know, and there's concerns about them and this, and the conditions and situations that they're in. And I guess the key would be trying to figure out how to get those um actually permitted legally. And I don't know what the, what the trick is there, uh, but I do know that it's not expected to just break down our door the first day we allow this or something like that.
Thank you, Martha.
Well, uh, commenting on Kevin, uh, you know, I think Multloma County and Portland didn't expect the homeless crisis to be what it is, and all of a sudden that blew up on them. So, you know, we need to be careful of what we do here.
Tammy, go ahead.
Um, before we go into discussions and then deliberation, could we please take like two or three minutes?
Yeah. Okay, make a break for uh five minutes. Let's come back at uh eight twenty-three. Thank you, Darcy. Okay. More comments. What did we leave off with, Michael? You kind of left us hanging there.
I'm, I'm happy to make a couple comments, or, you know, we're doing discussion at this point, I guess. Um, I've put an incredible amount of time into thinking about this, and the reason is I see so much of it. I know Martha brought this up earlier about this exists. It's totally out there. And I think more out of curiosity and to be able to bring some uh value to this discussion, I contacted and visited some of my neighbors and friends and thought I might just share um what I know of in this pretty circle. Uh, one is on a rural residential farm for a five-acre. It's an RV, just a travel trailer inside of an agricultural building uh that did not secure electrical or plumbing permits. The second one I chatted with is in EFU, and there was an ADU in a barn, again, no permits, an ADU in a container, and an ADU in a basement, all on EFU. No permits on any of it. The last uh people that I spoke with are in timber zone properties. There was um three RVs just kind of dotted in an equipment lot, all running off extension cords, an ADU in a basement, an ADU above a garage, and an RV also in an agricultural building with no electrical plumbing permits secured. So when I'm chatting with them, I'm telling them, I'm not turning you on. I'm not your neighbor. This is your problem, not mine. I said, um, how would you do that? Well, it was brother-in-laws, it was friends, it was cousins that are plumbers and electricians, and there sat the barn, and they're not putting hay in it anymore, so they put an RV in it. This really, really is out there, um, almost frightfully out there. And the majority, of course, the majority of my friends would be in resource lands, because that's where I live. But um, I think Martha said something for the first time tonight that I've heard. But um, I think Martha said something for the first time tonight that I've heard. And how do we get a grip on this? Because it's pretty scary. Um, but other than that, so then my second thought was if we were to pass either one or both of these, how impactful is that going to be? Clearly, you know, there's traffic and there's um, use of services from all of these people that are living in these areas. So I just, I guess I just wanted to share that as part of our discussion. Um, and, and I haven't come to any decision personally on this, but that's where I am.
So what you're saying is they were all code violations or not complying with the law, right?
None of them. None of them complied. And nothing was a, nothing was.
It goes back to code violation.
No, it doesn't, Michael. Because what happens is if the neighbors don't care, which none of their neighbors care. But then you don't have a complaint and then code enforcement isn't even involved. They don't even, aren't even aware of it. So I, maybe I didn't make that point strong enough. There's a lot of these out there that the county is completely unaware of. They're scary dangerous and nothing's ever going to be done about it because, you know, Bob next door, you know, we share a beer every Friday afternoon. Why would he care? And there's the point. It, and I'm not saying code enforcement, they, I think they do the best they can with the resources that they have. But um, they're unaware.
Okay, so none of this, none of this stuff we're talking about is going to work for them, right?
I, I don't understand that question.
Well, what I'm saying is if we, if we a- approve these things that we were asked to do and recommend that they be in, be put in place, it's not going to help any of those people that you're talking about.
No, except I loved hearing Martha say the words, how do we sort of get our arms around what is going on? I, I'd love to hear about that, that a little bit more. But no, you're right, Michael. No, it's not going to make any difference. It's just, I, I guess until I really opened my eyes, I didn't realize how big it was. And also the word scary, but.
Yeah, it, it, it's like people going down the street and seeing a crime committed and not reporting it. They don't want to get involved. It's, it's that. It, it's what we've turned into.
Yeah, what I wanted to mention um, along both lines is to me, there shouldn't have to be an official neighbor complaint to be code enforcement. If we had an adequate lease, you know, staff finances for enough code enforcement staff, they could be out there giving code enforcement violations, whether the neighbors like it or not. If it's a violation, it's a violation and it's not fair to people who comply with the rules. And then um, I'm also in a, a natural resource zone like Tammy. I'm on timberland myself and I'm surrounded by a lot of um, ag forest or just uh, far exclusive farm use zonings and it's out here too. And um, again, people don't complain, but um, it's not, you know, they're all running extension cords and hoses. There's nothing permitted. Um, if you have a place, flat piece of land, which isn't all the land out here. They might have six RVs lined up on it and, you know, they're renting them out. And a lot of times the RVs are shabby and that's because if you try to place your RV in an RV park, they have standards, they won't accept an old or shabby RV. So these are people, I doubt they're all relatives who, you know, are all renting. There's some of them come and go. Neighbors don't complain because when you're on 50 acres, you, I guess you're not really bothering anybody, but you know, they're all violating like Tammy said, and they're everywhere and that they're not family, they're not probably friends, they're just tenants of these shabby, often shabby, dilapidated RVs that are just hooked up every which way illegally. Um, so, and then lastly, she mentioned how the RVs were in agricultural buildings. To build an agricultural building, I know, because I've built two of them, they're not inspected heavily like a regular structure. But you can only build an agricultural building for use for your farm or forest. I know my two agricultural buildings must be used to house only equipment for using in the forest or related stuff. I can't store a vehicle in those buildings, an RV, a car. No, you can't do that. It's an agricultural building. It was built with the county telling me we'll let you build this with no inspections, but you can't put your cars and your RVs in it. I don't have an RV, but I couldn't put it in there anyway. So there's just violations everywhere. And out here in the town where I live, it's pretty much, you can do what you want and I'll do what I want and nobody complains about anything. But you know, we can't have that countywide. It's, it's enough of it's out here in the natural resource zones. It's going to get ugly if it's in the more heavily populated zones where people are not on 50 acres. So that's just my little two cents worth.
Martha, you have something to say?
Um, if I may, I'm not a planning commissioner. I just wanted to um, respond and maybe throw a different perspective out there to think about. Um, not trying to push anyway or the other, but I think that um, we all know that people violate the rules. And I don't think that these, this proposal is going to solve all the problems out there. But I think that um, there may be an opportunity to provide a pathway. You know, I heard a lot at the, at the online Q and A concerns about people living in very unsafe conditions and unpermitted buildings and electrical cords, et cetera. There currently is no pathway um, in the rural residential areas to provide this type of housing. And so maybe this would provide a pathway for some people. We all know that not everyone is going to take advantage of it um, because it costs money and for other reasons, right? Um, but it could provide some way for some people to be living in safer conditions that are permitted. So, and that's sort of the other perspective. I'm not going to say that this is going to solve all of the problems out there because it's not.
Thank you. Kevin.
I, I don't know if the planning commission and Ben said here, but if we staff up our code enforcement department, I hope we're not saying we're advocating, we want code enforcement to drive all over the county. And if they see something to go onto somebody's land and say, you're violating Clackamas County code. That we, we should not be doing that. We, yes, we have rules in place. We want people to follow the rules. We know they, they won't and we, we see it every single day. I mean, dear point, Michael, yes, on the crime, it really depends what kind of crime is being committed on that point. Um, because people all put themselves in danger, but I'm just, I, I just hard pressed and I'm, I'm really listening to Martha on this and she's right that, you know, we're trying to create a pathway for, for some people to do this for, you know, have lived, but we don't, we don't have the code enforcement staff. We don't have the resources or the funds to do anything about it. And a lot of people, they do move to Clackamas County for the rural area to be left alone, to do with what they want on their own property. And in our society, we've, you know, we've given the right that if you, you're on your own property, you're not interfering with anyone. You're not causing harm to anyone. Then we shouldn't interfere with what somebody is doing. Now, I mean, I get the thing, the extension cords, yes, can create a fire danger. I mean, we've had the discussion about the fireworks and the fire danger they have. Where, you know, we've, let's say, oh, well, we want to enforce all these fireworks. Well, just because we want enforcement, even if we have the tools, is that going to stop somebody from lighting off a firework and starting a wildfire? No. So it's the same thing here. Even if we have rules in place, not it, it's, it's not going to solve the problem. So, so I get what staff is trying to do and to mitigate and find a pathway, which I admire and know the work involved, but there are some things, there are some problems we're just not going to solve here. And, you know, we, we can talk about all the greatest suggestions in the world, but that's, that's not the society we live in.
Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin, I, I, I agree with you. I, I don't want to uh, uh, put it in a police state here. I, I, I believe in personal property and what a person does on their land is, is their problem and it's their issue. But when we're looking at some of these things, like this particular one on the RV, okay? Mister, I'll take Jennifer's uh, position. I don't know how to pronounce the name. P Y L K A Dennis, he had some very good suggestions about what to put in for the RV. I mean, maybe not all of them will work. Martha talked about uh, you know, the uh, uh, cement platform and all that. Maybe all of them won't work, but some of them sounded real good to me. Okay. And the neighbors that are around these people, they have some concerns. And if you take a look at the surveys that were done, they were saying that these, that this RV issue is a problem. And I think we need to take that into consideration. All of these proposals, all five of them. I'm for, except for number two. I think the staff needs to take a look at this RV issue a little more seriously and take a look at these suggestions that Dennis proposed. Now, all of them were not going to work. I know that. But some of them would. And for me, I'm okay with all, with all, with four of them, but not with the RV without some restrictions put in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Carrie?
Martha, can you put up that map with the yellow polygons again? Cause I seem to recall that they were heavily concentrated near Gladstone area. Is that?
Sorry, I have to backtrack.
Uh, I, that's, I'm sorry. I should have.
No, no, it's totally fine. There you go. It's this one, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I know that it's not City of Gladstone, but it's, you know, near there. You could see where it's at.
Happy Valley.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it, City of Gladstone, I just looked up Google. I don't know how accurate it is. Has a population of 11,000 people. Um, you know, I know, I know that it's, there's Happy Valley in other areas, but you mentioned that there are 24,000 lots or potential for within, near the cities. I'm assuming that's majority of it is, and it's not all 24,000 obviously. But majority of it is in that, that between, area between Milwaukee and Gladstone. To the east of Clackamas River.
I think so. It's within the urban growth boundary, which is this dotted red line. So it would include all of these orange areas. All of these and it actually um, for that urban number includes these rural zone, rural residential zones in Damascus because they are actually inside the urban growth boundary. These will be larger lots. So I would say the majority of them are, are with, probably within here or at least half.
So there's, I mean, just doing, you know, public affairs math, you have potential of doubling capacity of size, the City of Gladstone population basically in that area. That's a lot of.
Well, again, if you, if you assume that every single person who can do it will do it.
I understand that. And, and I understand that there, you're saying that there isn't a, you know, nobody's, I mean, you're not seeing a bunch of people knocking down the door for getting these um, RVs placed into their lots. But um, so I understand that. But the worst case scenario is that there could be a huge impact um, in that area. And I just, I, I, I guess I'm with um, Michael in that I don't have a lot of issues with the um, ADUs, especially because, you know, it seems to be in a bigger lots and um, we are going to take um, Karen measured way of placing them there. But I just have a huge issue with RVs. I, you know, I own a travel trailer and I think my travel trailer is pretty high quality. It's not somewhere that you actually should be living in on a long-term basis. It's not, I, it's so, I just, I really have, I don't know which commissioner mentioned, or maybe it was a, somebody in the um, audience that mentioned. We need, you know, houseless community and the problem is solution with solving that is, is complex and it's nuanced. And this could be a, an opt, one of those solutions to, you know, one peg that fits into that big puzzle. I just can't see myself moving into recommending that we place, we allow RVs to be a long-term housing within these areas um, the way it's been identified. And knowing that there are a lot of um, things that are already happening. One of the, I was sitting here listening to Tammy and Louise talk about how these things already exist. One potential suggestion that if, if the commission ends up um, proposing to move, you know, recommend these changes, including RV. I would, I would request that commission consider having the county go back and bring all these non-conforming or folks that are violating the current codes into um, into compliance such that, you know, maybe there's an amnesty or something where they actually come into compliance within given certain time. Um, but right now I, I don't, I can't vote recommended to the commission that um, we allow the RV portion of what's being requested on ZVO two eighty-five. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Would you consider conditions then perhaps?
If, if, if all of the other commissioners are in agreement that we're going to uh, recommend um, these po- components, all of it, then I would, you know, offer up that um, option or that condition of bringing other non-conforming or, or violations into compliance within certain timeframe.
Carrie, Carrie, that I, people are not complaining, just what Tammy said. They've got people that are not going to complain about it. Uh, and you know, I think we need to vote on each one of these particular items. One, two, three, four and five. As far as recommendations. I don't want to vote on the whole thing because if we're going to vote on the whole thing, I want to vote no, because number two is not what I think we should do.
Um, I just wanted to say real quickly, we have a member of the audience um, who has added um, some dialogue to the chat feature. And I would thought maybe somebody should address that. It's a brand new comment. Murph or Jennifer or someone?
Um.
Are you looking, are you looking at?
I'm looking at the Q and A. There was um, one recently added at eight thirty-nine by Dennis and he's a member of the audience.
Now, the property tax people have uh, choreographed that they can look at aerial photos that could see RV and locate the lot with GIS. And he's right, you can.
So I, I'm just going to interject a little bit. Um, we're, we're spending a lot of time talking about what the county's code enforcement department can.
Thank you.
Reality is, planning has no influence over that. So, and there are no resources for that. So I think what really this group needs to focus on is the proposal that's before you. Given what you already know about the way code enforcement operates in the county and make your recommendation from that perspective. Um, I think you could take five votes. That seems to be what Commissioner Wilson is suggest, is, is suggesting. Alternatively, of course, somebody can make a motion to approve, to recommend approval of four of them and not approval of the other one and you can take a vote. But I, I know there's some folks that haven't spoken yet and so want to be conscious of that as well. I just think that the, that the code enforcement discussion is a little bit of um, kind of outside our purview. And so I don't want you really to think that we can influence that too much.
Understand.
Murph, I got a comment. Uh, this is Tom. Uh, I apologize for interjecting. Um, I, I don't know if anybody noticed in the packet, but the city of Malala is concerned about some of the things we just were talking about, which is the grandfathering in of non-conforming RVs in their city. Which is the grandfathering in of non-conforming RVs in their city. If we pass this ordinance, um, as to RVs, but I wanted to offer a couple of other comments as well, I mean, and I think Martha provided. She was using the word context, and I think that's an important word here, um. Let's start with why the state passed these laws to begin with. Um, and I think they passed them to try to address houselessness in our state. Um, and I recognize the fear of the RV issues, and God knows, we've all seen them parked on the side of streets. But that's not what we're talking about tonight. What we're talking about is the rules by which we would allow. Houseless people to move into an RV. And that's not the same thing as an abandoned RV, and I think sometimes the emotions of those. Abandoned RVs may lead us to forget what we're trying to do. Having said that, I have a proposal that perhaps would lead to some votes. And that is that we go ahead within the urban, single-family residence zone only. And we approve the RVs under all the requirements the state has. But in the, in the rural, uh, zone. We require a pad with electricity, water hookups, and the essential services. That are provided under the law, that must be provided anyway. But those that have, they would have to be provided in a separate pad designed for the RV park. And created for that purpose, and that's my proposal.
Well, 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 first off, Tom, I don't think proposal number one and number two are mandatory by the state. Am I correct with that part, Martha? Am I correct? Number one and number two, the ADUs, they're not mandatory required by the state.
That's correct.
Oh, Tom, they're not mandatory. We're, we're recommending something that we as county commissioners with the planning commission are going to support.
Agreed.
Okay, so the state law does not say we have to do this.
Yeah, nor am I suggesting that that's what it, I'm suggesting that. Perhaps with the proper rules and regulations, an RV on someone's property would be acceptable in those urban. Urban areas, and I know you disagree with that, but that's just my opinion.
I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with certain rules and regulations on that, which was presented. Those suggestions by Mister Timelaw or whatever his name is, Dennis Timelaw, seemed reasonable to me.
I took the opportunity during discussion to look up what constitutes an RV pad. And, and I'm not sure there's a legal definition that I could find quickly, but, but there is some stuff, I actually sent it via email to a couple of people, um. About, it says electricity shall be provided to each recreational parking lot, all utilities will be underground. And approved by agency or jurisdiction services, uh, or permitting authorities, water hookup would be to the city utility or to the applicable. Uh, well site, blah, blah, blah. So there are some potential. Pad rules that we could enforce and require permits for in a rural setting that might make this work a little bit better. That's my two cents.
Can we please hear from Kevin Moss, Commissioner Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so.
One moment, please. When I ask for someone to speak, I expect order. So when one is speaking, I expect order. Kevin Moss, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so in order to move us along to get to Tom's point, I would move that we. Approve ZVO two eight five with the staff recommendations excluding option number two on the RVs.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
All in favor, or any discussion first?
Just to clarify, so we'd be voting on, uh, one, three, four, and five. Without any changes, without any amendments, just as written.
Correct.
I think technically, was it as recommended by staff, Kevin, is that what you said? Cause we had a couple of technicalities there on the last slide.
With the technicalities by staff, yes.
Okay. And so if you're gonna call for the vote, Chair, while first discussion, uh, we would, let's either raise hands or do a, or do a roll call. Whichever you prefer.
Uh, let's raise hands, please.
Are you calling for the vote?
Well, I would like to call for discussion first. If there is.
Um, I guess, oh, I guess, um, one of the notes that I sort of left out was when I chatted with my friends. I asked them, um, wh- why did you do this? I mean, they knew that they didn't get permits, and their answer was, well, ADUs are approved. And there's always that, oh, they're just approved everywhere. People don't really get that there's different zones, or, you know, if I can just do this under the table and not have to buy expensive permits. I can just do it because ADUs are approved, so. It was my biggest fear that if we said, RVs are approved, okay, that's it, RVs, right? Hook them up, get your extension cords, where's that white hose, we'll just get that hooked and go. And, and if we did a modified approval of the RV. Um, it's just gonna be out there, and it's why I want to vote for approving as recommended. All but number two, and the number two should not be considered at this time.
Thank you. Any more discussion before vote?
I, I, I agree with what Tammy said, and I believe that part of this, uh, uh. It's not an amendment to the emotion, but I believe the county com- the planning commission, the planning department. Needs to look at those recommendations that were proposed by Dennis about, you know, the RV. Then we can relook at that if we have some additional restrictions or rules put in place on that. I understand from Tammy that we're not gonna get everybody to, to agree with the, with the rule. But having those rules in place is a good place for us to, uh, a- at least. Address people that come forward with concerns about RVs on adjacent properties. Or on their own property, that those rules would be in place and they could refer to them. Thank you.
When we've, when I first opened this hearing, I stated that I probably wasn't ready, because I think this needs more work. And that's exactly what I think needs, is the RV part of this. It doesn't set well. Uh, with anybody who's responded, there's a few that, yes, I understand. The shortage of housing, I understand all the work that we looked for, uh, back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. We were looking for ways to house people, get them off the street. We talked about this, but we lost, uh, a long session, if you remember. Uh, the state didn't meet, and so those types of regulations never passed. They had a short session, and now we're back to a long session, so. Here we are, we have something to work with. Am I right? I mean, was, that was something that happened, I, they walked out, so we did not get work done at that time.
I moved a question.
So. Do, we still have a motion that we vote for one through four, we exclude number two. I think we raise hands for roll call.
I think it's mo- uh, moving one through five and excluding number two.
Excuse me, thank you, Louise.
We've got. Five hands up?
I don't, I don't think every under, it, do a raise hand if you are supporting the motion.
Raise your hand, Louis.
Cause he said roll call, so I was waiting for my name to be called.
Alright, so it looks like it's six, uh, so hands down, and then. Are you, are you opposed or abstaining?
I'm, I'm opposed, um, simply because, you know, if twenty percent of the properties that issue actually do this. We've created sixteen hundred beds. And I don't think that's enough, so I, I think we should have, we should make a better effort on the RVs. But I understand, and I certainly bow to the will of the majority, absolutely, and would support that motion to the county commission.
So motion carries six to one, Chair.
Thank you.
It has been moved by Commissioner Wilson. And seconded by.
No, 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 that was Commissioner Moss.
Excuse me, okay, I'm sorry.
Alright, we're, we're done with that part, Chair, we're, we're good, you can skip down now, and, um, unless you're gonna discuss the RVs further. Close the hearing and move to the next item of business.
I don't know if we have any more to discuss, we, it's probably past making a ask. Of the Board of County Commissioners at this time for future work on this, I don't know if, uh, staff. Has much, uh, time that they could do this, um.
Well, we'll, we'll be sharing, um, I mean, the hearing at the board, of course, we'll go ahead, and as always, we'll share the significant issues. So I've taken notes, Martha's taken notes, Darcy's taking really good notes, and we have a recording. So the, the board will know, um, you know, what you, what your discussion was. And we'll share what the significant issues were that were raised with regard to the RVs, so that, that will all be shared.
Well, let me tell you this, the county commissioners are up for vote, uh, for election, uh, they will be considering this seriously with the populace.
Okay, so the hearing is now closed.
We have. Murph, will you be attending the Board of County Commissioners meeting, hearing?
Uh, so far, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
I may even attend that as well.
Okay. All is welcome. We have minutes to approve. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second?
I, I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 All against?
I abstain, I wasn't there.
One abstain. Right. Jennifer, is there any new business?
Um, I guess not really, just to let you know that, um, I think we told you at the last meeting that we had seven applicants for the planning commission. So tomorrow, the board will be discussing at their issue session, uh, who. I, I'm assuming they're gonna follow the same protocol they've done the last several years, where two members of the board interview candidates. And so we will find out who those two folks are tomorrow, and then we'll move forward with scheduling interviews, so. Um, we certainly won't have new members by May first, which is technically when the terms start. Um, but as we talked about last time, people can continue until we have new people appointed, and I would certainly hope that would happen by. The end of May would be my goal, and then it will be time to elect officers again. And our esteemed chair is term limited, so we will in fact have to elect a new chair and vice chair. Um, but that, we won't do that till we get our new members seated and, and all of that, so.
Excellent. Okay.
Um, Chair, Jennifer? One, um. I got really confused, I, I mentioned a date on the staff report to Martha earlier today, and I got really confused. Could, Darcy, could you change the dates in the, in the back, the agenda? These are listed as twenty twenty-three. All but, um, one of them is twenty twenty-four, but all the other ones are twenty twenty-three. So if we could just modify that, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll get those fixed. Sorry about that.
No, it's alright, I, I, it's just me.
It's funny, I loo- I've looked at that more than once and didn't even, you know, you look, you only look for what you're looking for, right? Right over. Hey, Jennifer, did you give them a, a hiring update last time? A hiring update, um, no, I don't think I really did. I said that. You've done that in the past. Yeah, I think I did say we were, seemed to be resolving our, our staffing, um, issues. But when I say that, I'm afraid I've jinxed myself, um, so yes, we have, um. Filled all of our vacant planner positions with our, yes, very exciting. So we had five openings, um, and we have hired three planner ones and two senior planners. And the last one started today, um, so, uh, I, I, again, I'm really afraid I'm gonna jinx myself. But truly an amazing group of new employees, I think, that seems to be the general. I think that's the general consensus, I know it's early yet, but, um, but really, really, um, nice group of new employees. With a lot of, I think, great background and, um, education and skills and interest and passion for the work and all of that. So I'm very optimistic.
How nice to have reasons for optimism, that's great.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's exciting, um, and then that leaves that we did do one internal promotion into one of the planner one positions. So we have an open permit specialist position, which they're really essential to making all of our. You know, our files organized and our mailings go out and all of that, so we will be hiring for that vacancy. But, um, but otherwise, we have a full contingent, so. And there may be some new faces here at Planning Commission. Yes, yes, there may be, yeah.
Well, hopefully not replacing you, Martha.
No, but I'm pretty sure you get tired of listening to me.
What I would recommend, there was one, uh, uh, participant tonight. That recommended that we have someone from the code enforcement show up. Now, I don't know they can't show up every meeting, but if we could find someone, uh, from the code commission. That would show up, you know, maybe ever so often to hear our complaints about the code enforcement. And us having to address certain issues with the community about that, I would appreciate that.
We talked about having, uh, at one of your study sessions, I think we talked about that last time. Uh, having somebody come and, and, um, talk about the code enforcement program, you know, cause we do a lot of sort of speculating. Um, here, but we are not really experts in any of that, and so, uh, to have somebody come and do a, um, presentation for you. At least so we can kinda set the table for how the process works, and I've actually spoken with Cheryl about that, we will make that happen, we don't have a date identified yet. Um, but certainly, um, sometime this calendar year, we will, we'll get that on your agenda.
Thank you.
Come, so, yeah.
Thank you.
So as far as schedule, um, you have your continuance on the utility facility item on May thirteenth. Um, the written record in that, as you'll recall, is closing on the sixth, um. And so we'll send you a packet of whatever, whatever new things have come in, uh, by then. And then, um, pick up where we left off last time, and that's the only thing currently scheduled. I think I mentioned to you, there will likely be a couple of items coming for work sessions, but they aren't quite ready yet, so. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Martha, Jennifer, excellent job. Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, since we're recommending to the board that number one, three, four, and five are approved. And number two, no, and it's just kinda hang, it feels like it's hanging out there, um, will the board just make a decision? Like, you know, like, just like we did, or they can of course prove number two, and if they don't. Will we then go rework that or have another meeting where we can talk about those, that, those concrete pads? And official hookups of the, you know, in other words, how will that proceed? Cause it feels like it's hanging out there, or loose.
So it'll go with your recommendation, which is to not approve it. It will, we will talk about the things you, that you talk the most about, which I think is pretty clearly concerns about code enforcement. Concerns about, um, this, this question about the pad, I mean, we can, we can share sort of the highlights of, um, of your discussion. But in the end, the board's gonna make a decision, and they, they're gonna do one thing or another, and I would, I would not anticipate that this would come back in the short term. Now, if the board were to vote not to adopt it, and then they wanna revisit it at some point. They could, and they could send it back to you or, or whatnot, but, um, we have a couple of other fairly big projects that are coming up. In the next fiscal year, and we really probably need to shift our resources to that. So I, I wouldn't anticipate we'd be taking this up again if the board doesn't adopt it now, in the short term, you never, never say never, but.
Yeah, I mean, my view, of course, is that I'm against it as it stands. Yeah, I mean, my view, of course, is that I'm against it as it stands, but if they're going to approve it, I'd rather them approve it with those changes, but it sounds like just a mute issue at that point, this point.
Well, I mean, we will share that. We we will share that that, that the nature of the discussion was that it might be more acceptable to the planning commission with the pad and those requirements, but still overall, you were opposed.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move adjourned.
Well done, everybody. That was a hard one.
Nice to see you, Cheryl.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. It's nice to see you, Kevin. Yeah, thanks for letting me join you tonight. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Good night.